Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Valeria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October 2nd meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kayla has our Dog of the Week.
Hello. Yeah. Our featured dog this week is kinda wound up. Commissioner Williams and he were both playing fetch together, I don't know who was throwing the bone, but... He's a Chesapeake Bay Retriever, he's about a year old. He's a stray found in Grafton and he'll be available on Friday. Extremely friendly dog, great colors, great look. I think he really likes our new dog warden and our chief deputy dog warden, because he keeps looking at him. Come here, let's get a good picture of you. Come on, come here, turn around. Okay, hello, yes. Come on, come on, get a good picture. And if he's not quite the type of dog you're looking for, how many we got, Nelson? About twenty-eight dogs available, so stop by and find yourself a dog this week.
Pretty colors, like a brindle. Why? Oh, because we don't have red on?
No red on, Indians in the playoffs for the first time in six years. And the only one that joined me is Kaylee from the Morning Journal, so... I'm glad the Morning Journal's doing good recording on the Indians.
And they're more burgundy than red, so...
No, that's brown.
You know, I wouldn't dip.
I'm sorry, Barry Taylor out there's got it.
You know, I'm a Democrat, Tom, I can't wear that red shirt.
Go ahead.
Red and pink, I state your name.
I do, I will.
Do you solemnly swear the right of support?
I solemnly swear I support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will fully perform the duties.
And fully perform the duties.
In common and common.
Yep.
And common and common.
As dog, as dog.
Of Lorraine County, Ohio.
Of Lorraine County, Ohio.
According to the state.
According to the state.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
To help you out.
So help me God.
Welcome to the nightmare. I think red would look better than blue. Only problem is, I couldn't find anything to go with the red shirt this first time.
Tom, Tom, weren't your signs blue and white, look colored like mine?
Huh?
Weren't your signs blue and white?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, he was trying to masquerade that.
Exactly.
That's before he grew up and nobody wanted to be.
Okay, we should be downstreaming.
We ready?
Are we done now for a while?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Preparations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
There wasn't any travel, I don't think.
No? No, I guess not.
Okay, beautiful.
Those are bills?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla, I do have a few items that I wish to discuss with the board this morning, potential new hires at Golden Acres, maybe at the Dog Kennel, the Collection Center. Also wish to discuss what you the ongoing labor negotiations with the United Auto Workers of America and Job and Family Services. They're meeting this morning and having a fact-finding session this morning, so I want to brief you on that. And I think those are the only two issues. One second. And also a matter of pending litigation. All of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Law for executive session discussion, so I ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive sessions and discuss those items I have outlined. Thank you.
Quick question, have we heard back from the City of Lorraine?
On what issue, sir?
Regarding the Hidden Valley contract dispute.
Yeah, we keep playing ping pong on that. I hit the ball over and make some case and then they hit it back with the same stuff that they have proposed before. The last two correspondents I have, I've seen no bending in their position. We do have a session scheduled, counselor for next week, to meet with them, I think? Maybe? Okay, Sandy isn't here, I thought I had a meeting with them next week, but I'm not optimistic, because the correspondence hasn't changed. And I'm sending out another correspondence today, responding to their response, to my response, to their response. I'll meet with them and have this discussion, but I'm not hopeful that we're gonna be able to move in a positive direction. But the board had asked, I know you wanted to move on that, but the board as a whole had asked that we at least meet with them.
I would like to at least meet with the Hidden Valley Residents Council and see if we should actually, if we are gonna go into litigation, possibly joining their suit. Jerry, would that be possible? I mean, we are representing the people.
Do they have something filed?
They are getting, I'm told that they are looking at filing, they wanted to know where we stood.
I would guess that if a couple things were filed, the courts would probably consolidate those cases.
The courts would do that?
The last position was regarding the Hidden Hollow, Hidden Valley. It was that the EPA, 1976 EPA document detailed Sheffield Township Sewer and similar area Township sewers, but it didn't mention in there the Hidden Valley sewers. And that's because at the time, we were working on the other sewers. But clearly, the attachment that speaks of the service area has Hidden Valley in that service area. So, you know, documents are really, really good, and then when they get forty years old, people get paid an awful lot of money to find reasons why they shouldn't mean what you think they mean. And that's the case that we're in right now. The Hidden Valley subdivision is clearly within that defined map. Question once again now, is they're saying that the seventy-six agreement doesn't cover it, because the EPA wasn't discussing that in there. I don't believe that has any merit. But, there's, you know, there's other people that are gonna ultimately decide that. The second argument they're making is that they had a developer's agreement that supersedes that agreement, that they say set a hundred and thirty percent. Now, the awkwardness of this, and the truly interesting thing here, is that a year ago, they took a completely opposite direction on that and said that the developer's agreement didn't have any bearing on this, and the hundred and thirty percent only represented water, so they were free to do what they wanted with sewer. I find their positions amazing. One day, it doesn't have any merit, and the next day it does, and then it's back to it doesn't. This flip-flopping is essentially...
Whatever is benefiting them.
Yes, essentially whatever benefits them today. I don't know how you can make both the same arguments in the same case at a different point in time when you presented with additional facts. So, because I just received that letter from Lorraine mid-last week, I don't know that we're gonna get anywhere, we're gonna go to the table and go, yes it does, no it don't, yes it does, no it don't, for a couple hours. I don't think that, I was hoping to see at least a little crack in their position, but there hasn't been. And again, they're working on behalf of the best interest of the city, so it's, I don't want you to take this as a negative comment about the administration here. I like working with that administration, and I like working with the city. They're gonna hold their stance, and they think that's where they need to be on behalf of their community. I respect that, but we disagree.
We have a thousand households that we have to represent as well, and with that...
Commissioner Williams, I sat at more than one meeting with you, and I told those people that if the Board of Commissioners had a way of representing them, they would certainly do so aggressively.
And we didn't until the EPA letter came about.
That's accurate.
We didn't have standing prior to that.
That's correct.
We're just getting to a point right now where it's not moving. And I don't wanna waste taxpayer money to go into litigation, but right now, I don't see any other way to resolve this issue for the residents. And we have Sheffield, Valeria, and the Hidden Valley areas that are still paying that service fee, and for some residents, that's a two-hundred-and-two percent of what they're paying.
But if they do agree to what the EPA said the rate should be, are they still allowed to add a service fee on top of that? That's the question.
That's what the attorneys...
Right, they still may be able to do that, that's the problem.
For the moment, that issue really isn't in dispute for me. The issue of the rate is what's, their argument, a year and a half ago, I think, when this started, this is quite a while ago, pardon me, was that the hundred and thirty percent water rate didn't influence the sewer rate, because it didn't mention sewer. My argument was that sewer is driven by water, so therefore, you don't need to address the sewer. If you address the water rate, you have essentially addressed the sewer rate. They said hogwash. It's okay, that's fine. And the problem they're in now is, they may have been overcharging them at a hundred and thirty percent, if that agreement doesn't have any merit. They have essentially defeated their own argument now with additional correspondence, so their premise now is that, well, they're not in that agreement. I know that they're trying to do the best for the city over there. And I will tell you, in Sheffield Township, especially in Sheffield Township, some of the things they said about the sewer that we were told multiple times weren't accurate, the condition of the sewers and things were going on, our information wasn't accurate. I have since, in the last six months, spent an incredibly large amount of time going in there and correcting defects in those sewers, to the point that the flow through the sewers now is probably only about twenty-five percent of what it used to be. Between infiltration, broken water mains, open manholes...
Illegal taps.
Well, the illegal taps I'm still working on. This is another nuance of the system. We do not bill in that area. The area is serviced by Valeria Water. Now, as I said in a prior statement, water drive sewage. So you bill for water, and your sewage volume usage is driven off the water bill. Valeria does the water billing, because it's in their area for water service, and then they bill for sewage, and then they remit payment to us, and we sort through what our fees and debt service are, and then we send a global bill to the City of Lorraine. System seems a little complicated, but it really isn't. The problem is, if somebody did a tap into that sewer over there, and there had been plenty of illegal taps, you know, that happened, and we're not made aware of it, and they're not billed for water, we don't get a sewer fee, you know, one or two, that's still a pretty rural area. There may be some people still pumping water out of the ground over there that, you know, put a tap in by midnight, you know, and that happens. So, we went through, and we have audited, and again, not to cash a dispersionary comment onto Valeria, it's not their fault, but we have audited all the water bills from the City of Valeria, it took us a while to get them, and driven down the roads, and pinpointing the water bills down there, and we've found a couple people that seemingly are in some kind of limbo, because they're not paying a sewer bill.
Well, I noticed in the auditor's report in the City of Valeria, when they came in to the performance audit, there was about nine-hundred-thousand gallons that weren't being billed for. Have you looked to see if that's water that's actually going into the sewers?
Would you like to incriminate yourself here? I mean, I don't...
Well, no, it's in our audit, it's not...
It's in their audit, I don't really know where their water went, I'm just taking care of the sewers right now.
Well, I'm just wondering if that could be an issue that's causing additional flooding for Lorraine.
Right now, we've eliminated all the I and I that's possible into the sewer systems over there. But there are some taps that appear, there may be some sewers that are tapped in that aren't being billed for. Now, another point is that, in the last correspondence, they talked about giving us information from when they put the cameras through the sewers, to where these taps were, that they know weren't being paid for. Well, I never had that information, it was never given to me. And I remember being over in the City of Lorraine, and they were talking about hearing these taps, and they never gave us this information. Now, they're saying they gave it to us, and they never gave it to us, we didn't even know it existed. We didn't even know they sent a camera through the sewers.
Well, I actually did a public records request, asking for data to show where the, how they were coming up with their numbers.
Well, that's on the I and I, on Hidden Valley. So, why did I go through this whole exercise of, you know, getting all these records and doing all this work, when they had this video cam data that would've made it a lot easier? Didn't have it. So, we're gonna be responding to their second letter today with our position. Again, this is not, I don't want anybody to take away a bad feeling on this, they're doing what they think they need to do. Our sewers were failing over there. We were told they were not. We were wrong. We have since corrected eighty-five percent of those issues, and I hope to have a hundred percent correction before the year is out. And I had flow meters in there, I did everything we needed to do, and it wasn't quite as bad as they made it out, but it wasn't near as good as all the folks were saying it was. The last thing I've done is, and I'm waiting for the data, we just haven't had enough periods of rain yet, I authorized flow meters to be put in the main lines over at Hidden Valley. The pretextual reason for the rate increase or the fee increase was that they were taking a lot of I and I from Hidden Valley. Once again, we were told that wasn't possible, it was... I'm tired of hearing what's not possible, because the realities are, we were wrong the last time after I put the flow meters in. So, once I have that data, we'll have to see. If there's a lot of I and I, we'll have to see what we're gonna do. There's a little different issue in Hidden Valley than there is in Sheffield Township or Valeria Township. We don't own the sewers in Hidden Valley. We own the sewers in Sheffield Township and Valeria Township. The sewers were put in by a developer in Hidden Valley, and then were tapped into the City of Lorraine's sewer system. So, I don't have a lot of rights nor responsibility to be in those sewers. But I did get permission to put the flow meters in, and we'll analyze that data. If there's work that's needed there, then we're gonna have to figure out what, if anything, we're gonna do, because we're not collecting any money from that area to deal with any problems on those sewers. But first, I want to make sure that the data we're receiving is accurate. I'm assuming that it is, but, you know, trust but verify. And that's where we're at. I don't know that we're gonna see any movement at the table, everybody is posturing for the high ground, I don't blame them, to be honest with you, if it's an interpretive issue, you always wanna be, you know, in the strongest area possible to negotiate settlement. And this could take a very long period of time. These type of negotiations don't end quickly.
Right. We have the responsibility for the residents in Hidden Valley, Sheffield and Valeria Township as well.
I would say, based upon that nineteen-seventy-six agreement, we have some standing in the issue, yes.
And that's the understanding, correct, Jerry? That we have some standing in the issue, correct? That's what we were looking for a year ago.
Nobody knows what to do, the truth is, they interpret it differently, we interpret it differently, the residents are upset, nobody really knows what to do. They're not gonna give up, and neither are we. That really means that somebody else needs to...
Right.
But I'll have the meeting, I'm not... And Commissioner Kayla, I know you called the city after our last discussion, and that's when I received these letters, responding to my letters that I had sent out in July, with a rather mystifying position that they have been trying to get a hold of me for the last three months without success. I don't know where I was, or Sandy was, but I don't think anybody has the ability not to get a hold of me. And it was a reference in one of the correspondents, well, you said you were gonna call me. Maybe I did, so you waited three months for that callback to come? I mean, things, you know, they're not moving the issue.
Thank you.
Approved waive the reading in the minutes of September twenty-fifth?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approved and participation agreement with CCAO Service Corporation for Electricity Purchase Program effective January first, two thousand fourteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second?
Commissioners, for a moment?
Yes.
As you vote on these, I'd like for the public to know that for a very, very long period of time, we've been in these consortiums to save energy and gas, and we routinely review these too. And Mr. Challenger has done a yeoman's job at looking these over and competitively trying to source them. We're with CCAO, because they still offer us the best arrangement possible, but we're not just haphazardly renewing these contracts. Mike's quite a predator when it comes to dealing with these, and demonstrates his value to us in the sustainability area. And we're also working on some issues still, as you know, with the transformers, and possibly owning the transformers, so we can reduce our rates even more. So, sometimes we get criticized out there, but we do do all the things that we're supposed to be doing.
Right, they go out and they basically look for all the best deals that are out there, and they present to us, and then we make a decision on who our provider's going to be in regards to electric and gas.
Well, we've been in that natural gas program since maybe two thousand one, two thousand two. The electric program's a little newer, it's only in the last several years, and it seems that worked out very well for us, but we have competitively looked at this, just for informational purposes.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approved and turn of participation agreement with CCAO Service Corporation for the Natural Gas Purchase Program effective January first, two thousand fourteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Increased longevity pay for Lorraine Municipal Court bailiff Jim Soto at a bi-weekly rate of seven hundred and twelve dollars and nineteen cents, effective retroactive to September twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen, reflecting the county's two-fifth share.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Board of Elections advertised for bids for roof replacement projects, notice to be in the journal on October seventh and fourteenth, pre-bid meeting October fifteenth at nine, at the Board of Elections, and open at two P.M. October seventeenth.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Much-needed improvement over there at the Board of Elections.
Can I speak to this for a second?
Sure.
Sure, without a doubt.
Very shortly, we're gonna begin the process of doing some capital improvements that have been deferred for several years due to a lack of funds. The reason I wanna speak to this is because we still have a lack of funds.
Right.
But we're at a critical point in some repairs that continue to deplete our ability to use our facilities. One of those is the sidewalk repairs that were authorized, it's gonna be about fifty thousand for the first phase. We have, we no longer have small holes, we have craters in the sidewalks. And we have attempted to patch them on multiple occasions over many years, but because the concrete is in such poor condition, it spalls right out, there's nothing really to adhere to.
Like filling a pothole?
Right.
Doesn't last long.
It's somewhat worse than that, because the concrete has a different makeup to it. So, we've been trying to use soft patch in those, and it's great for two, three, four weeks, and then it just doesn't. We put the adhesive, the additives down and everything else to try to get it to attach, it doesn't attach very well. So, we're starting that, and that's gonna begin very soon, because we're gonna have the whole front of this building all done before the first freeze comes in. So, there's gonna be some inconveniences, but we'll deal with that. And we also are doing some in-house stuff over at the courthouse to remove quite a bit of concrete that's no longer needed. And I'll go over that, which is at a future date. This roof here has been in need of repair for, well, Commissioner, when you first got here, Commissioner Williams, we talked about this.
It needed it before then, we brought it up, walking through the boat and had buckets.
We tried to do an energy conservation upgrade to absorb this cost in energy savings, we just weren't able to tease out enough savings to do anything. Now, we were gonna do more in this roof, the HVAC units are dated up there, but they're still functioning, they're in a parapet off the side, the rest of the building is a sloped, standard roof shingle-type arrangement. The parapets are, have a flat bottom, and there's an EPDM rubber surface there. That too is in need of being replaced, but I don't wanna do that, because I wanna do that in conjunction with an HVAC upgrade. I can still squeeze some time out of these HVAC, so I'm gonna keep them tweaked as best I can for a while, and we'll make sure that the roof stays whatever needs patched up there. But eventually, we're gonna have to do that piece of this. So, this is only, I wanted you to understand, so in the future, if you're seeing something else, I want you to know what we did here, we're only doing the pitch part with the shingle, we'll do a thirty-year, I think, shingle on this, and get that done, but that's not gonna complete this project. But I think we get a little more life out of that, those HVAC units. No sense replacing the roof on the old units that have to be lifted off, and have all those penetrations through the roof.
Agreed.
Pillars outside, are you having those redone because of the water coming off the roof? They've actually rotted?
I don't know. I'll have to take a look at that, Commissioner. You seem to spend a lot of time at the Board of Elections. I'm assuming so, I believe that's gonna be accomplished. This was a comprehensive look, but I'll ensure that that gets taken.
You may wanna talk with Jim Kramer, he walked me through it, showed me all the issues that they had.
Okay, well, we've had people out there, and we had the job spec'd, so at least we're moving in the right direction now. As I said when we began the conversation, we still don't have money. Since, you know, we're trying to give the public more and more information, where's the money gonna come from? The Board has authorized a capital improvements bond to be in conjunction with the equipment and upgrade bond for nine-one-one, because the issuance cost goes down, when you lump everything together, it's just how you account for the payments to it, to accomplish some of these projects. And you've authorized two million dollars to be borrowed, and it will be borrowed in And you've authorized two million dollars to be borrowed and it will be borrowed in the future. I haven't done the borrowing yet. I'm working at notes and stuff for the land bank and the Port Authority. I anticipate now with some issues that have changed, I anticipate doing that in December to go to notes first and then to bonds later on to be able to pay for these projects. Right now, we're just taking it out of carryover and it needs to be replaced for next year's budget. And I will do that sometime around December so that we have those funds. And then we'll have additional funds for the spring and there's a few more projects that we've all discussed here and there that we need to take a look at for spring. The, we don't have a choice in this. Some of these things are really, really bad. And if we're going to preserve the investment of the taxpayers, we have to do this maintenance because we are no longer preserving the investment of the taxpayers. It's your house, the roof is leaking and it's blowing out the interior house. How much is that house going to be worth after you invested in it? That's where we're at. Thank you.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams? Under Children's Services authorized various personnel to utilize agencies MasterCard for two thousand thirteen for food, lodging, transportation, telephone, gas and oil, minor vehicle maintenance, emergency repairs, county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams? Under the engineer advertised for bids for Chamberlain Road Bridge zero-two-ten replacement Grafton Township, notice to be in the Chronocon October fourth and twelfth and open at two P M. October twenty-fourth.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know the, for the first time in a long time, everybody's going to be tuning into the Indians game tonight. They can be the great wild card hope. It would be nice to, especially to do it through the wild card process. It's a real David and Goliath-type win. But unfortunately, most, fortunately and unfortunately, most of your directors will be at the phone bank tonight at the community college eating pizza on their county administrator phone banking for levy activity number two. I'm real proud of our crew. The colleges come out and helped us before and they, they've helped us with the sales tax in the past before and they're on the ballot and our people are returning the favor and going man the phone banks tonight. So, if you do get that call, Commissioner Williams, during the, you know, ninth inning just before the pitch, sorry. Because I may make it to you. That's.
My number's unlisted.
Your number's on the back of your car.
Unlisted in the phone book.
You're the easiest person to find in the whole world. You drive around with a mobile billboard with your phone number on it. So, the, but I just wanted to let you know, we'll be out there. We'll be making the calls tonight. If somebody had mentioned that, you know, the Indians are in the playoffs and a lot of people are going to be watching that, they're going to be pretty annoyed that you're calling about a ballot issue. We picked this data a long time ago, so we're going to do it. Hopefully, we won't get yelled at too much, but I'm proud of your crew for coming out. So, I just want to let you know that.
Wonderful.
That's all I have for this morning.
Mr. Reynolds?
Commissioners, I would like to continue some of this discussion on this Lorraine issue, but I would prefer to do that in executive session. Secondly, I have an issue regarding compensation of an employee at Soil and Water and it segues into the authority of the commissioners. So, I would like to discuss that in executive session with you also.
Commissioners report?
Well, yesterday, we had a very lengthy straw-hag ditch meeting, which I ended up coming a little bit late for because I thought it was actually today. So, I apologize to everyone. I think they all forgave me.
We had a person come in today for the meeting too. We had a person come in today for the meeting.
They were on my schedule.
They're the same secretary as you.
So, it was good. It was a real good meeting. A lot of good information was brought forward. Hopefully, we'll come up with a good solution. Monday, I had my Goodwill board meeting that I attend monthly. Wednesday, after our board meeting, I was on a conference call with Obama was actually on with us too, talking about the Affordable Care Act. I know we had some problems yesterday, people trying to log on, weren't able to do so. So, hopefully, as time goes on and the computers aren't being overworked, you'll be able to go ahead and sign up for your healthcare. And also, I think it was Wednesday, Cork and Stubbies in Amherst, we had a fund, there was a fundraiser for Lorraine County Community Action Agency. So, it was wine tasting and hors d'oeuvres and it was a really nice time.
Well, tell him I was there too. That way, I don't have to do it on my.
Yeah, he was at all the things that I was at.
Except Goodwill?
Except Goodwill, yeah. He weren't at my Goodwill board meeting, so that's the end of my report.
I'd like to thank Mayor Bring and Rosa Gee from Sheffield Lake. I was at the Sheffield Lake Community Center last Wednesday evening talking about our issue one, the sales tax with the property rollback and addressing their issue. They have issue eighteen on the ballot. We're having an income tax increase to cover the shortfalls they've also had through the local government fund cuts. Also, I'd like to thank Vassy Scott with Liquor Landlords Association. He was able to get me on the agenda for last night. I spoke to their crowd again about issue one and in regards to them, the amount of property they own and what the benefit is of the property tax rollback. Some really good questions. Seemed like it was supportive from most of the folks that I spoke to there, so that'll be the end of my report. Go Tribe.
Wednesday, I was at the CHIP event where Tim Keryan actually became president. Great individual. He was going to represent CHIP proud. Joel Aradondo, longtime president there, great individual. Sad to see him go. He did, the organization a terrific job during his time there. And, I'm trying to actually remember. There's so much that's been going on in October.
Busy week, I know.
Saturday, I didn't get a chance to make it to the NWACP event. I got stuck in Mansfield for a soccer tournament. It went longer than what I thought it would go and, which is a good thing. So, it means you're playing more. I had a fundraiser Saturday night for the Ohio State versus Wisconsin game. Ohio State came out. So, hopefully, they're on a road to a national title. And as everyone else said, go Tribe. Hopefully, we'll be playing Boston on Friday, so.
Commissioner, can I segue into one last comment that I was remiss on? I don't know if we talked about it last week, but, you know, the college has just received a almost one-point-two-million-dollar E D A grant. Everybody in the world has taken credit for that grant, which is really kind of nice. But the truth of the matter is locally, with the college's work, in conjunction with our community development department, was able to secure this grant. We have now, for the second year in a row, taken quite a beating from some of the communities for positioning the college at the top of our economic development strategy plan for Lorraine County. We always try to take those projects and move them to the top three seeds that have the most potential for getting funded. And it was a lot of, there was a little bit of a voice of discontentment out there in the community about them being the number one seed again this year. But without that, without that, they would not have gotten this one-point-two-million dollars. They had to be the number one project of this community to receive an E D A grant. So, it was worth the time and effort and it was worth the blows that we took because we had a greater understanding of the community as a whole, rather than as an individual parts, to be a successful partner. And I received quite an extensive email from Tracy Green and Roy Church lauding the work that your staff did upstairs and the things that we've done to position them with their hard work to access this funding. And I need to say that out here and I almost forgot to. Everybody above us in the political system all taking bows for this, but it all began down here on the floor. And you guys would be congratulated for that. Now that they're funded, somebody else will move to the top spot in our economic development strategy plan. And also, by the way, at Tim Rain County meeting while they're doing their reorg or whatever they're doing, I don't know if you heard, you know, they keep mentioning the county doesn't have an economic development strategy. We've always had an economic development strategy. They just don't take the time and effort to come and see what we're doing. We do try to keep them informed, but if they don't want to acknowledge anything, every year, we do the SEDS and set it up so that we can access funding and various grants and things from the state and the federal government. Without that tool, we would lose a lot of ability to apply for things that we've been satisfied.
A SEDS is a comprehensive economic development strategy, for those of you who don't know what a SEDS is.
Sorry. Started talking the A B Cs.
I had that last night, actually, one of the questions from one of the gentlemen at Lila. What are you doing for economic development?
Well, I was sitting at that meeting and so were you, Commissioner Kayla.
Correct.
I think Commissioner Koska, you were there too.
She was there too.
And they started talking about how the county had no focus, no economic development plan and I'm tired of talking about it. I'm tired of telling them there's been one. There's been one for many years and every community comes together every once a year and we duke it out for what's going to be the priorities in this county. I congratulate every one of those political activities that comes to the table. It's hard to give up the first spot for somebody else. But you have to make the decisions that are in the best interest of success for this community, not at the individual smaller community. But they do come to the table. They do do that every year. They do get it done every year, which is amazing too. And your community development department is the one that leads this process every single year. So, congratulations to you. Congratulations to the college, but more so, congratulations to our people that were able to get this done. Sorry, I forgot about that.
That's okay.
Can't remember everything.
Madam Clerk?
We'll have a records commission meeting next Wednesday, October ninth at two o'clock. The commissioners will also have their town hall meetings from six to seven, next Wednesday, October ninth at City of Lorraine and October twenty-ninth, City of Avon. Four correspondents?
Move the reading be waived?
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
Yes.
Paul? You're here.
In the name of God, most gracious, most merciful, we thank him for his blessings and intervening in our lives. Certainly, we wish peace upon all of us, as well as his august body. Commissioner Kokowski, Commissioner Ted Kayla, Commissioner Tom Williams, I want to thank you for giving this opportunity to address you again this year, Annual Day of Atonement.
Introduce yourself.
I'm going to do that. Name is Imam Hassan, Imam Paul Hassan, from the Lorraine Organizing Committee for the Day of Atonement. Address is twenty-six fourteen West Dairy Park, Mid-Lorraine, Ohio. Again, I want to thank Tom for, and as well as the commissioners, for supporting the Day of Atonement. This year is called the, called the universal oneness in light of the things that are happening in our community with youth violence, you know, we have a government that's shut down, mean-spirited. You know, we always want to take a day and this day has been for every, every year for the last eighteen years. We said, we decided that we want to take a day that aside where we can come together and not criticize one another, not despise and reject one another, but come together in light of all the problems that we have in our community. And as we know, atonement means to forgive, ask the Creator to forgive us for all of our sins because we constantly sinning and we want to, again, kind of have a new slate on our life. And the Day of Atonement kind of addresses that kind of situation. But this year, we're going to be at Pastor Horace Church, God's Kingdom, on Saturday, October nineteenth, noon to four. This year, we have our keynote speaker is Amir Rashid Burge Song. It's Amir Rashid Burge Song. He's actually a Vietnam veteran. He came, pulled himself up, you know, from the bootstraps in Pittsburgh, Ohio. He has organizations called Crimeant Empowerment, about a ten-point-five-minute operation. And we also, you know, hopefully, all our veterans will come out because he's a Vietnam veteran and we certainly want to honor him for his service to this country and honor him in terms of, you know, the kind of things he's been doing in Pittsburgh. Last but not least, we also reached out and I was at a function a couple of weeks ago. I ran into Mr. Jesus and Michelle Knight. When Mr. Jesus came here, oh, maybe seven years ago, we accommodated him at City Hall. We had a prayer vigil for him when nobody was really believed that we would find his daughter. But I ran into him and he remembered our, what we did that day and we invited him out to the Day of Atonement. And we invited, but also, we invited Michelle Knight to come out for the Day of Atonement. And what we want to do is make this day one a memorable day and also the day where we're all working together, you know, with commissioners, whether it's city leaders, whether it's pastors, whether, because it's intergenerational, multicultural and interreligious. So, we always want to make sure that everybody is welcome. And last but not least, I'd like to say that it's a call for all of us as far as men, you know, to be better husbands, to be better fathers, to be better brothers, to be better cousins, to be better, just be better men to our women. And in light of the kind of things that we see that we don't really give the kind of respect to our women that we should. So, this day has been established for that particular reason, to show our respect and our love and concern for our women. So, I want to thank you again for always inviting me here. Thank, you know, Tom for always inviting me, as well as all the commissioners and I think Tom is going to try to make it on that day. So, again, thank you very much for having me and if any questions, well, you feel free to ask me any questions.
Well, actually, I want to thank you because a lot of people talk and they have a good talk about it. You're actually out there doing something. And been to a few of the meetings and actually hearing the impact that you're having on the youth lives in this county. It's a tremendous job and I just want to thank you.
Thank you. One thing if I could say, I was in Chicago this past weekend. It was a National Gang Summit. Well, we called it a National Unity Summit, not a National Gangs. We're getting away from that gangs, that kind of phraseology. But I was just one of the speakers and one of the persons that was invited to the National Unity Summit. Matter of fact, it was very enlightening and we talked, we had, you know, gang rooms, so-called gang rooms that came out and testified, you know, apologized to the community, did the kind of things they've done in their life. So, it's going to be, they're going to be taking this particular summit across the country. And we had one in Cleveland back in May, so just want to let the commissioners know that we were, Lorraine was represented and we represented Lorraine and the state of Ohio very well. So, thank you again and wish you much peace.
Do a nice job, Paul. It was our last year. I had to speak after Father Bill Thaden, did them a sacred heart. Nice turnout, really nice event.
The church is sixteen seventy-one, North Ridge?
North Ridge Road.
North Ridge Road. Pastor Charles Howard. And I want to say about Pastor Howard, he's accommodated it for the second year and I want to thank him, you know, because he's a Christian pastor and I'm a Muslim pastor, but we don't allow that kind of, you know, adversity or not want to work with each other. So, that's the, that's the kind of coalition we build, Christian, Muslims, Jewish, you know, black, white, Hispanic, whatever have you. So, that's what this day represents. So, again, thank you again and for your support and hopefully, we'll maybe see you.
I'll see you October nineteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Proclamation.
Yes, sir. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else looking to address the board this morning? I'll make a motion to move an executive session as outlined by the county administrator and county prosecutor.
Second?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Leiria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.